Some move to approve?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? None. Well, we might as well get right down to the knit and gritty here. The Douglas Dykstra. And you're representing, you're the owner of California Cars?
Me and Anthony.
Oh, this is, oh, okay. You're the one that lives in California then?
Yes, I am, sir.
So you guys want to come up and have a?
Have Jessica read the?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Come on up. Forgot about Jessie. You want to read the published hearing? Now, you can sit at the chairs right up those three.
The publisher. City of Columbus Public Hearing Notice, Conditional Use Permit. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, March 20th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a request for a conditional use permit to allow used car sales, vehicle repair, and body shop at the property listed below. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Applicant Douglas Dykstra from California Cars Connection. Signed Elizabeth Mersko, zoning administrator, submitted to the Forest Lake Times on March 4th, 2019, posted on March 7th, 2019.
Thank you. And now, could you state your names, each one of you, who, what you represent, your?
Douglas Dykstra.
And your address?
In Dover, Minnesota.
Okay. Do we need a street address on that?
We're good.
We're good, okay.
Anthony Perez, Carpenter, California.
And you're a representative for them?
Yes, Dan Frigner.
Oh, okay. All right, well, we might as well start out with the two owners of the place. If you want to tell us what you plan to do and how you plan to operate out of this facility on Lake Drive?
Essentially, it's going to be bringing cars from out west without rust, older cars. Put them either just for sale on the Internet or fix them and then put them back on the Internet. It's going to be all done on the web, most, for the most part. We will do, you know, some will be completely redone and some will just be sold right away the way they said. And people like that here. They're, most of them are old from 50s, 60s, 70s, stuff like that.
Okay. How did you pick Columbus?
Well, Dan is looking for a building. And I live pretty close. And I have another job as well. And I work, it's very close, in Green Rapids. So it works out. Yeah, it's kind of hard to find a good-sized building that I.
So how do you plan to get the cars here? Are they coming on a semi or?
Yeah, they come on a semi. And I load them, bring them inside the fence there, up in front of the building. And most of them are going to go inside of it.
So how many cars you think you'll have there then?
I don't think we would see, would have maybe 15 or 20 at the most. As they all fit, most of them fit inside there, the building.
And how many employees will you have?
It'll be me and two other gentlemen that were working many years.
So is this kind of like Gas, uh, Gas Monkeys? It is? For the public, anybody know what Gas Monkeys is? It's on satellite TV. It's Richard Rawling, isn't it?
Richard Rawling, yes.
Yeah, he's, it's a pretty famous show. They build muscle cars. That's the first thing I thought about when I read this. I thought, so that's what you're going to do?
Yeah, some of them are pickup trucks. I've already acquired some that aren't here yet, but in route at some point. And, but then there's some, you know, the muscle cars, you know.
You talk about the Internet more so than, but to people, I don't, I don't know, just me personally, I wouldn't buy, I'd like to look at something before I buy it. So you're going to have people come out to the place then?
Well, yeah, and when they, if they call me, we're going to do a website. You know, once I get a physical address, then I'll do the website, have it done professionally. And if they want to see one of the vehicles that we have, make an appointment, let me know, I'll come out there and meet them there. I'd be, I plan on being the first.
And secondly, when you talk about the website, do you know you need a dealership license?
Absolutely. I was there this morning.
Okay.
In St. Paul. Started the process with that.
Okay.
I got a bond, you have to get a $50,000 bond as well. And that's all started with the business insurance company as well. They do, it just turns out they do that too. So it's one-stop shopping for us. I want to do this completely right and above board and.
So you're going to do it like Gas Monkeys and have Miller Lite beer there?
No, no, I got to drive home.
Oh, well, I just want, that's, he advertises for that too.
Yeah, he does.
That's for me. I get, I have the beer assistant.
So you, you stay in California then?
Um, I will be coming out here probably, you know, once a month or so, just, I mean, I want to be in detail with this as well. I'll be, I'm taking a course for the painting aspect. I've been a painter my whole life, so I want to be updated on all the new paint facility. You know, what it facilitates to be, you know, for the car painter and all the exhaust, everything else for the, you know, fumes and all that. And the new, new paint booths and everything else, be up to date with regulations, which I will be. And I, I will be out in California, looking at cars and purchasing and sending them out here on transportation. And I do want to be, you know, as much a part of this as possible. I want to, I mean, for he and I, I've always been a car geek myself, but he's, he's been a little bit more than myself. He's a little more, you know, involved in it, but I, I'm learning on, I'm learning a lot as I go anyway, so. We do have some, some specialty vehicles right now that, that are very exciting in my book. I've, I think they're, they're ready to go. We have some that are ready to flip already that we want to, we don't plan on having these cars sit around for too long. We want to restore them and get, you know, majority of them back to original, original factory stuff, or some of them will be from up, you know, make them to order for certain individuals if they choose so. You know, if somebody likes his car on our website and they say they want specific things and we can do that for them, so.
So you're going to have two other employees then? And they're mechanics or full-time?
Yeah, long, long time mechanics and body man.
And your hours are?
Be, you know, 8:00 to 4:00, maybe if they want to, you know, if I want to do something on one of my personal cars after that, I might hang around a little bit longer. You know, I plan on being there every single day as soon as I get off my other job. And I will be over. And I don't see that, you know, midnights and things like that.
Mr. Chair, I missed the hours.
8:00 to 4:00?
Yeah.
Doesn't it say 8:00 to 8:00?
That would be, you know, something like that.
Okay, so 8:00 to 8:00, um, is that?
Unless somebody calls me and says, I'd like to come see this, this, you know, particular car and I get off work, whatever.
So you're going to have a showroom there?
Is that five days a week?
No, I think it was, how many days a week?
Seven, right?
Seven?
Seven, yeah.
They have a, a part of the building is where we store cars. The middle would be for working on them. The curtain up, so it don't get all dusty or whatever, you know.
So they'll come in on a semi like one of those big car haulers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you going to haul any Minnesota cars back to California?
I've had a good look at them. I've seen rust. I don't think they'll be going back. They might.
Well, you guys are going to be in a great location. You got Waldox Custom right there and then you have the man caves.
From what I hear, yeah. Into that. I've been in this all my life, this type of cars. I came from California in 91. I've never left. I've lived, my father's from here originally. Him and I are cousins. And our family out there. I, I came here and I love it here. Graduated and played at the U and I've been, got in the trucking business, you know, when I first came here and worked my myself up. And I like it here and I think this is a good thing to do here right now. Everybody's working and a lot of guys want those cars back from when we were young, so.
And Waldox Custom, Don Waldox actually owns the building. Very much in favor and thinks it's a great, there's a great synergy between the two businesses.
Nice. I have a few questions.
Okay.
Hi Doug, nice to see you. Thank you for allowing me to come out to see the, the space. Really cool space. I think it's a great idea. Just a few things to touch on, more of a, in our findings and facts and stuff. And you got an email on those? Were able to look at that and stuff?
Um, I did.
Okay. Was there anything that you thought was, you didn't understand or wasn't clear?
Not really. I mean, I'm working with a lot of that stuff with the Minnesota.
Okay.
Like how much, what are we going to need for?
Okay, um, so you said that you were going to put a fan in?
Yes.
That was something from Leon, our building inspector?
I will have somebody come in and do that. It's, work for that from the inspector.
Okay. And then about, about how many cars will you think you'll sell like in a year? On average? 20 to 30?
A year?
A year.
As many as possible.
Exactly.
That's why I'm hoping we'll be able to flip them as soon, you know, as fast as possible, but some cars take a little longer.
Okay. And then equipment-wise, inside the building, you're going to have what?
A booth.
Paint booth?
Yeah, it's a brand-new one, state-of-the-art.
Okay.
Filters all the metal and stuff. And then we'll have a lift.
Lift?
And I will get a frame rack in there so that I got to, if I got to straighten stuff out, that I get, you know, guys that I have working with me are all experts at that. Again, he's going to go to PPG and Hopkins for school while he's here. And he knows how to paint cars already, but we're going to learn how to do it for the PPG, the new stuff that they have. The paint nowadays, some of it's water-based and it doesn't even have any hazmat to it. I want to start looking at that, but, but still some of the, the stuff that we will be using will be done per the state of Minnesota. Environment is all handled well. Any, if I have to change oils and things like that, it will be done exactly. We'll store it and then take it to a recycler. It's not going to be so, you know, that much. There's, according to Minnesota, if I do less than 2,000 gallons a year, which I'll never hit that. I don't even have to get that, what they told me this morning.
Over at Anoka County?
Correct.
For the hazardous?
Well, see, I met, this was the state.
Oh, the state, okay.
I met with a couple of people this morning. We've been taking, trying to get all this done we could for you. But I will go to them next and then get that, you know, also in writing.
When your city inspector was out, we talked about, he talked about the specifications of the paint booth that they were going to purchase. He was familiar with it and how the ventilation works and how it's all contained, so there is no use that outside of the booth itself.
Is there any ventilation part of it that goes up out of the building at all?
This is a down, no, this is a.
This is all self-contained.
Yeah.
And I do have, I do have some packets here if you guys wanted to view any of it.
Yeah, we did.
We made some copies.
We talked about that too.
Yeah.
Getting a schematic, yep.
More than welcome, I mean, I will hand them to you. Would you like them right now?
Yeah.
And I think that's the big difference in the, in the booth.
Thanks.
They are self-contained, so that.
Thanks, sure.
Thank you. We can share.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
I think Jody's got the floor yet.
Sorry.
So on the hazardous waste permit, you licensed, I'm sorry, with Anoka County, you'll talk to them?
Absolutely.
As to, okay.
I'll take care of that right away. And I, there's, you have to do an ID for that building. I would have had all this done, but I didn't have an address to tell them this is the address. So from what I, we met the man for the, the dealer's license and everything like that. And he worked with us very nicely and we're going to get that too. Being done, we need done. But we can sell five of them without that, right away, if we wanted to. I'm not going to sell anything. I want that stuff in and done, you know, so that we're completely above.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, the, the address has already been established and long established for the site. It's 13733 Lake Drive. So it's, it's the current address, yes. Uh, one more question. We talked about the drains in the floor of the building.
I want to talk to him about that. Walked out of here.
Okay.
We saw one, we want to know where it goes.
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking committee is that we have, in the past, had businesses when they have alternative fluids, that they have an alternate drain container that can be pumped. I don't know if this site has it, but I know there's open drain in the building. And so we were just inquiring and where's, you were going to speak with Mr. Waldox on whether he had a drain, an actual tank for that or not, or if it flows right into the septic system?
When you wash cars, it goes right into, there's a, there's a thing there for it to go right into and I want to know how. We have to get something.
I believe there's a fire waste trap there.
You know that for fact?
I don't, but.
Okay, we're at hearing, that's why we're asking.
Sure.
Because we have to know the facts to give to the city council. We can't just say we think. So if we could verify that, that would be awesome. Just also because when you use, when you're on those older vehicles, 50s, you may be looking at some lead paint. When you do some of your sanding down and stuff like that, that's now stuff that just gets washed away and where does that go? You know, so we kind of have to, right, yep. And I think, Mr. Chair, that's all my questions.
And Chris?
Can I just ask one question of Jody?
Yes.
Oh, wait, I'll wait till hearing. Sorry.
Discussion, yeah.
I was just, I know you were talking about the paints and, and a lot of them now are becoming water-based. But a lot of the ones you're using to begin with, are they combustible, flammable?
They, they are.
And does this spray booth have a fire suppressant or, I mean?
They come with that.
They, they part, okay.
You can order those with that. And we want that, even heating element to. We want to do everything just have it nice. Everybody's happy. I want it anyways. We want to be happy too.
I assume you want your cars to be prestige.
I'm very environmentally conscious as well. I'm a, I'm a stickler to keep our environment.
Thank you.
As it is.
And Mr. Chair, one more question.
I think Pam.
Oh, no, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm waiting for a discussion.
On your transport, is there any chance that truck might come in on Sunday night or, you know?
I would pers, no.
You'll, you'll make plans that they're coming during your, okay. I just know sometimes with weather.
I can be there. I want to make sure these cars are in the same, you know, shape when they come out.
Okay, fair enough. Thanks.
So some of these guys are coming in that you won't have to do any work on, probably?
I found some nice ones.
Oh, you did? So do you bring them in an enclosed trailer then, one of those?
No, no, they're insured, so they're. To get them in an enclosed is very, very expensive. Uh, what, after we get these initial cars in, then we're not going to have so many coming at once, maybe two at a time. And then you could put in something. Depends on what it is, by the way. We're trying to get a 65 Mustang that's worth probably $70,000. That would, I would put. So rare, you can't find them. Wouldn't want something to happen.
I could drive it back.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question. There is the possibility people are going to come to your shop. What about test driving?
You mean, uh?
If they're going to buy one?
Yeah.
That, I assume they're going to want a test drive. I assume it's got some power.
Oh, that ain't going to happen. I know.
Okay.
It's not going to happen.
They're not going to let them rip up and down Lake Drive.
When they buy that.
When they, when they have a, when the check clears or the money, the cash is good, then, you know, then they can go away from the site and burn all the rubber they want. But not, on their site, not near us, right? No, there won't be any burning rubber near us.
One more question, Mr. Chair. Um, in one of the points in the, in the facts, site standards for the parking are partially met. And it says that space for employees and customers must be paved. I didn't know if you read that verbatim and understood that part. I know we talked about that you would like to alleviate that part because it is just employee parking. It's only three spots.
Yeah, right. Remember where it was covered with snow there? That's all paved. That's where that would, customers' hands.
Right. I'm just saying that the planner has written that in there and you said you read it. I'm just verifying that, that's something that you understood or?
I thought that I did, yeah. That, that's, there's both sides of that little parking lot, in front of that little office. There's also, they can park right there as well. That's my, the bottom, everybody parking. Well, mostly it's just going to be you guys that park there, you know.
Okay.
If somebody comes to want to see something, they should just.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay, well, it's our practice before we open up the public hearing to allow the public to talk. We can call you back if we have questions, so if you can go back to your seat, we'll, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to get up to the microphone and give their comments or statements about this business coming into our community? Don't have to run. I think you were right. Nobody wants to get up and talk? Okay, well then we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up for discussion among us, up front here.
Mr. Chair, I had a question. Jody, please. When you were in the site, where was that drone, dr, drain located?
It was actually in the additional part of the building, to the south of the building, kind of three-quarters of the way through that first building. There was a concrete area in the first building that looked like it maybe had been an original drain, but it had been sealed off. There is only one drain spot that I saw in there.
Okay, thank you.
I know, uh, when was this building built?
I don't have a year for the building, so I don't, I don't know.
I know years ago they used to just run those drains right out. If they were, if they were used for washing cars. I know I happen to have one, I think. But that was back in the days.
The building was constructed in 1978.
Well, that would fall in that area, probably.
I think I heard Jody say it was a three-year lease with Waldox.
It'll be a three-year.
Is it a three-year lease?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I had talked to Elizabeth about this on Merit's recommendations about, and I think this should maybe come up to the, the council, it said item number seven under recommendations. I, and I talked to Councilman Peterson about it, about dealerships and licensing of vehicles on the property. I don't think that's going to be a big issue, but does it have to be in there? Or do we do that with everybody?
You know, I, I think in this particular case, we understand that in, in the dealer license, there's a, there's a transfer. You know, they don't actually transfer ownership, but there's that in-between stage where you, the dealer doesn't actually own the, own the vehicle. I think what number seven is, is, and I know we didn't really discuss it with the applicants, but my understanding is that all the cars that are coming in here are cars that are running, that there aren't any inoperable cars that are going to be at your site. In other words, cars for parts or anything of that nature, that, that everything is going to be running or when it gets to you, you're going to fix it so that it is running by the time that it leaves the property. So I think, I think this one, if you wanted to rephrase it, it would be something to the effect that there will be no inoperable cars will be stored outside. And maybe something to the effect where, and if it is one, it will be operable within a given period of time or something. Somehow, the, the idea is that you're not going to have cars for parts outside. I don't know how you want to phrase that.
Like I said, when I looked at it, I, that's the first thing that popped in my head, but I think that ordinance was written more for neighborhoods.
It, it was, and that's why, and, and that's why in this case, in the, in the commercial district, you wouldn't see that you can only park two opera, or store two operable cars in your yard. This one would be, because it's a conditional use permit, there would be more of a condition. The other thing I, I thought that, I thought I heard you, the applicant, say that he was going to have up to 25 cars on the property. And when we usually have a conditional use permit, there is an up-to amount. In other words, you can have up to 25 cars, you know, parked in the, in the yard or 30 cars or however many cars there is, and then, and then that's what we use to be in compliance.
He said 15 to 20.
Yeah. Oh, he said 20 to 30. Oh, 20 to 30 sales, 15 to 20 a year, okay.
So maybe number seven should say there should be no unlicensed, inoperable vehicles allowed on the property, but up to 25 in the storage areas designated on the site plan.
What was that number?
25.
I gave them up to 25. I don't know. Do, do you want 20 on there? I'm not, I'm.
25 is fine with me.
So it's, we'll read, there shall be no unlicensed or inoperable vehicles allowed on the property.
Well, we're going to take the unlicensed out of there, right?
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's one of those, it's kind of an in-transit kind of thing, so it's not really licensed to them. It's really not licensed to the owner. It's called a dealer's license and, and they, they'll have a permit, you know, in the, in, in order to do that.
It's kind of like the cloud?
Yeah, exactly, in that gray, in that gray area.
Okay. Is there anybody else have anything they want to, Jody, discuss about this?
I do think we have to address that parking situation. Because if it is only three spaces, is it pertinent that those three, because it's employee parking, is that, that, that would? Because we're saying they must pave it. I don't know that that's necessary. If they've got customer parking paved, must they park, pave that portion of it? I mean, that's a question. I'm not saying agree or not agree. I'm just throwing it out for the committee to talk about it.
I thought they said they could have aggregate on the others.
On the other side.
That's if there's vehicles in store. And I thought I read it was, they could have aggregate.
They could have, they could have aggregate for storage as, as far as, and if they designate employee parking in the aggregate storage, they can. From what I heard from the applicant, he has four spaces designated for customer parking. And then there are three spaces that are right outside their door, or what I would, I think there's a door in the, in the front of the building. So on either side of the pavement, although they haven't designated them as employee parking, there are three additional spaces in the blacktop area, which will, which totals seven. So I don't, I don't know that the city planner understood that parking, there was parking on both sides. that parking...there was parking on both sides of the driveway.
I don't know how you got there, Jody, but when I went by that place, there was snow all over the place.
She went today.
I went. No, I didn't go today.
Oh, you did?
No, I went the other day. I met with them on Sunday.
Oh, I was...well, I went by there on Saturday and it's just...the gate was shut and there was snow everywhere.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's why I couldn't see what paved or not. Do you have any other comments, Jody?
Should we reword that then? I think so too. Yeah, I do.
I think we should reword that.
Just because there is seven. I mean, it seems like an unnecessary expense when there's so, you know...
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So, you'd put them all over here where one through four is? Yeah. That you consider customer parking? Do you think that's necessary or...
I don't have an opinion. Like I said, it's not a big issue. I don't think.
Why should they?
We don't see any delay here.
I mean, you're not having...everybody that comes to your place is calling ahead of time. Right, so you don't have John Doe driving down the road and saying, "I'm gonna whoop in there and..." So, you're gonna have a sign on the outside then?
I was thinking about it, you know, something to say where we're at, but I'm not someone there when somebody is coming there. Nothing crazy, just a sign. But again, it's gonna be all done over the web.
Well, see, I look at it sometimes. If you put a sign out there that says California Cars Connections...
That's what he told him.
You're gonna turn the corner. Yeah.
I know we're bringing us cars, but... Right. It's cold.
Well, I just see people seeing that sign and wanting to pull in.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. I guess we just roll the dice.
I was thinking about just a CCC in the address.
Well, that would probably do it, yeah.
Just a CCC. I don't need the whole long name, but...
And then you unload your cars at night so nobody sees them?
I'm gonna have some cameras. I'm gonna have a couple of mine vehicles just there.
Are you gonna display your website address anywhere on the sign or...
I was thinking about putting that on there too.
So, people wouldn't just stop in? Yeah.
It kind of lost me there. It lost me there. Did you say so...social media or...oh, I just said the media. You're not gonna be filming out there, are you? You're not gonna be filming out there like gas monkeys? Well, did we get that settled on that pavement?
Yeah. I think if we omit where it says employees and and then take out the sentence that says, "But the area shown for three employees parking spots not paved", that should...that should fix that component there.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just got there. What...where start?
If we take out the employee and, so it still says for customers, must be paved, and then take out after paved, "But the area shown for three employees parking spots is not paved", because then under the code will continue for the aggregate. Does that sound...sound to everybody?
Yep.
Okay.
So, should we just take this one out right here? The paved right here. There we go. I'm missing that one.
So, it's just the customers must be paved.
And then that's... Got it, thank you. For some reason, I just couldn't...
I know.
I couldn't follow that. Okay.
What page you on?
I'm on page...no, I got there and then I'm like, I'm just not computing. Okay, then.
And, Mr. Chair, I think we still have to address the tank itself. We have to have something in here somewhere.
About a holding tank?
About a holding tank verification or for the drain. Well, for the...yeah, because...
Didn't we have the building inspector go out there and inspect us?
He did.
We did. And I think one of your conditions would be subject to any conditions by the building official. And I just looked at his report. I think the last one, he has a condition for the tank. Or I'm sorry, the HVAC system.
Is that in our packet?
Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay.
On page six, it's number six.
Oh, I have it highlighted.
And he will have the...you know, he needs a flammable waste trap along with... and it does have to go into a tank and the tank has to be pumped. I mean, our fire hall has it and our public works building has it. So, I think that's pretty standard.
But should it be written into there in addition?
I think it is a...you know what I mean, would be a condition. And you're not familiar with where the floor drain goes? That doesn't go into a tank?
I would just verify.
Okay.
So, we would probably know that by the time the city council meets on this?
I would think, you know, give a couple of days to find out.
Okay. So, I'll put a note that will ask about that. Okay.
Anything else, Jody?
I don't think I have anything, no.
Yeah?
Number seven? So, we ended up with the verbiage, "There shall be no inoperable vehicles allowed on the property"?
For 25, we have the number...
And then I have a note here, up to 20...and then what is that? Up to 25 cars?
Total.
Up to 25 vehicles total. Okay, thank you.
Barb, do you have any comment? Chris?
The only item, I think, is the sign. We do have an ordinance on signage, correct? So, any signs that you put on would have to...would...yes. So, that's one thing.
And you'd have to apply for a permit?
Yes.
The only other thing that I have on my list in the findings or to add to the findings is to acknowledge that the landowner to the north does have a storage area on this property and it's depicted on the...you know, as depicted in the site plan. Just wanting to know, because they've labeled it Don Waldox Storage, but that is storage of vehicles... they're actually new vehicles that custom and... trying to think of...crafting custom that belongs to the dealership to the north.
That's where they park all them trucks?
Yes, they're the brand.
They're all lined up?
Yes. And my understanding is the applicant, the planner has acknowledged that there needs a little bit of landscaping on the property. And we've discussed this and he will add some this summer.
Is there anybody else that wants to discuss anymore on this issue?
I do not.
Jody or Barb?
I think I'm good.
I don't feel anything.
So, are these findings then that we have or are they conditions?
So, findings are in the staff report. That would be A through H.
Okay.
And those are all the facts that you have either gotten from the applicant, from the planner, myself, or any one of you. And those are the facts that have been presented. The recommendations, if once amended, those are your recommendations to the council for conditions.
Okay.
Findings are guidance, they're not conditions. So, when you're looking at conditions, those are the ones that we use for compliance. Facts are just that they were fact stated at the time. But again, they're not enforceable because they're findings of fact. So, if something is stating in the findings of fact and you want to make a condition based on that fact, then you actually have to come up with a condition and put it in the conditions.
So, do we make a motion to move this on?
If that's how everybody feels, then someone would make a motion to accept the findings of fact that the planner has stated before you and then whatever edits that you've added this evening and then, again, with the conditions, passing the conditions along to the council also as you've amended them.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I would entertain the motion.
I second. Wait until she does it.
I'm sorry.
Now, do we have to say all this stuff that we...
You do.
Yep, you do.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna follow along religiously over here.
Thank you. And any input would be great.
Yeah, you got it.
That we, the planning commission, would send forward to the city council the request for a conditional use permit for auto sales, storage and repair for 13733 Lake Drive Northeast, Columbus, Minnesota, Noka County. I've missed the...oh, California. It's the California Cars Connections. Thank you. With the findings of facts of...and now they've got these A through H instead of numbering or doing letters. With the omission of... in number A, bullet point five, employees and and then the sentence that states, "But the area shown for three employee parking spots is not paved". Also, in our...and then our recommendations of one through 11 with the addition of in number seven or inoperable vehicles allowed on the property up to 25 in storage area on the site plan. And then also number 12, sign may be applied for. And I would also include our building inspector Leon, his findings also or recommendations of one through six with an addition of the where the drain runoff goes to and if, in fact, there is a holding tank on the property. And I would recommend this for approval.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Who wants to second that?
No. I second it.
Okay, then we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Being none, we'll forward it on to the city council with our recommendations. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next week.
Next week.
Next Monday.
Same time, same place.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Welcome to Columbus.
Yeah. But you remember, it's the council that makes the decision, not us. Well, item number eight is open...public open forum. Is there anybody that'd like to get up and say their two cents? Am I the only one that got my tax papers? Now, I guess when nobody wants to get up, we'll go to information from the city administrators' report?
Well, you're supposed to have a presentation.
I was reading the wrong one.
Yeah, you didn't read the amended.
We have the mayor that's gonna give a presentation.
Where...I didn't have the amended one.
Yeah, you do. It's right there.
Oh.
It has a little red edition to it.
Ah, I see, here we go.
All right. So, I have a little page I composed and printed out. I'd like to read it to everyone. And the purpose of this is to welcome our two newest members, Chris King and Barb Babic, to the planning commission. Both Barb and Chris have attended many planning commission and city council meetings over the past few years. I think it started with the Johns Black Dirt issue and through the asphalt plant issue and most recently through the TIF project on Hornsby. The personnel committee felt that both of their interests in the city government and their attendance record demonstrated to us that their sincerity and willingness to participate in local government. In addition, I would like to welcome the rest of the 2019 planning commission members. Thank you for the time that you're going to put in and the commitment to our city. There have been over 25 years of past city councils, planning commissions and tons and tons of hours from Elizabeth and her staff to keep Columbus as a low-tax city with lots of open space, which has been supported by the taxes of the Lake Drive and Freeway Corridor business districts. When the current city council and planning commission make decisions for the city, each of us must put aside our personal agendas and the idea that I can't see it from my house and remember, all the decisions that we make today will affect the future of Columbus long after we're all gone. We have to work together as a group. Don't be hesitant to ask questions of the applicants, like the guys who are here tonight and the staff, anytime there's an IUP, a CUP or other new business venture issues coming up before us. There's no such thing as a stupid question. Don't be hesitant to question and discuss with each other during the meeting, the council members or the professional staff, the lawyer and the planner and the engineers. The better we understand an issue, the better our decisions will be. And we're all here to make the best decisions for the future of the city. And having sat through this tonight, I think you guys did a good job of ferreting out lots of good questions. I mean, we really had a thorough investigation for these guys. So, here's a couple of things I'll leave you with. Things to consider when applications come in front of you at the planning commission. Will the applicant for a new business generate a good addition to Columbus and to its tax base? We have a really limited commercial area on the freeway corridor and actually Lake Drive because of all the wetland issues. We have to capitalize on the highest return for this limited space that we have. And even though it's three square miles, by the time you take out the freeway and the wetland and all of that, we really do not have a unlimited area. Number two, what will be the impact on our residents and current businesses? What will the traffic be? And what is the increased cost of the road repair that is shared by all of the taxpayers in Columbus? Will the increased tax revenue from a new business help offset these costs? JW just mentioned the other day at a meeting that one 18-wheeler causes as much wear and tear on a road as 3,000 single cars do. And that's a lot of wear and tear, especially in our roads built in the wetlands. And finally, number four, we must always be an advocate for what's best for the future of our city. Not just today, not just what we like, but what's it gonna be in 10 or 20 years from now? So, again, I want to thank everybody for volunteering your time and your energy. We have a lot of important decisions to make in the next few years. And it's all gonna start soon as we get to work on our comprehensive plan renew. So, thank you, everybody. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go to the city administrators' report.
No, unless there's questions, I don't have anything for tonight as far as...
um, as far as announcements to make.
Nothing coming up?
Nothing, oh, as far as the planning commission, um, there's two subdivisions that will be coming up, not for the next meeting, subsequent meetings, and the reason why I don't have a whole lot of information is they just came in this past week. Hy-Vee did come in, um, earlier, but, um, we had a staff meeting, and it wasn't quite complete, so they submitted more things today, and I'm not sure if it's, um, complete, but again, we're talking about, um, latter end of, uh, April calendar, so, um, I'm not sure where it's all gonna land on the calendar, because what we've done is, um, on the website now, we have, um, deadlines, so if you don't meet a deadline for a submittal, um, then you go on to the next meeting. But it really is contingent on whether the application is complete or not. And so, um, we've had to, we have a new planner that has a schedule that, um, has to be met, and we have a schedule to meet, and so now the lead time for our applications is 32 days, um, and that's if it's complete. So, um, we put that schedule for, at least for the next quarter on the website, so everyone's on notice, because we meet once every two weeks, so it, it, it didn't really lengthen a whole lot from what we've done before. Dean was pretty flexible schedule-wise, so he was able to, um, accommodate, but not everyone can accommodate, uh, and be flexible with, with scheduling, you have other, when you have other obligations, um, on the calendar, so. Um, other than that, um, we will have, you know, we will have a, a meeting on, I want to say the sixth. Yes. No, I take it back. And you can tell I've been working with the calendar now, so now I'm thinking, we are on the 20th. It's April 10th. You know, it threw me off, if you notice, February and March have the same days and, days and dates, so it threw me a little off. We will have a meeting on April 3rd, but our next public hearings won't be until, um, April 17th. April 3rd is when we're gonna talk about the camp plan, and there'll be a workshop with the council at 4 o'clock with Hila and her group, um, and they'll talk through the incomplete letter with the council and policy questions, and then she'll make a similar, uh, presentation, we'll have a discussion during the planning commission meeting. But that's what the third is set, set for.
So do we have to be here at 4:00? Or?
Only if you want to listen to, to that discussion, it's not required that you.
But it'll be the same discussion, we'll probably hear again at 7:00?
I don't know that it'll be the same discussion, because I don't know what, I don't know what questions the planning commission will have, or, I'm sorry, the council will have. So I, I think Hila will have the same, you know, things to say, but again, the, the dialogue and what's talked about might be a little bit different, um, depending on where they take their discussion.
Question, is there a reason why this wasn't set up like a joint workshop, so that we'd all hear from Hila once, and have the culmination of understanding of everybody's conversation, or?
You know, I think it was discussed, and then it was, um, a decision was made that we would have, um, you know, the two meetings, and I think sometimes when you have 10 people, that's a very, rather large discussion, as to, to those when you have five on one, and you're trying to take notes, um, and trying to go in a, in a direction, so.
I have a question, is Merritt still our interim planner, or?
She is, for the time being, our interim planner, yes.
Okay, is it her, or is it the agency? I mean, can the agency send somebody else, or is it?
Um, TKDA only has one planner.
Oh.
And so now, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be anyone else. We do have an add-out currently for a planner, so I think that, depending on the applications we receive, will determine what form, uh, of a center planner we're gonna take on. We talked about a couple of different options. You know, when we have Dean, um, with us, he was with us for a long time, and he and I came up with a plan very early on, when I started, and, um, I processed all the paperwork, and, and he did the planner reports, and he attended staff meetings, and so we were able to talk through a lot of the applications. And from time to time, he'd come to the planning commission meeting. So it was kind of a minimalist kind of thing, where he, um, he did his part, I did mine, and it kind of worked for a long time. And then, two years ago, um, we just got really busy and realized that that system, uh, really wasn't gonna work once Dean retired. We weren't quite sure which direction we were gonna go, whether we were gonna go with a consultant planner again, um, just with a bigger, um, presence here. But when I started to look at overall, what other, what other options there was, um, there really wasn't a Dean option. Dean was, um, kind of unique, and he had his own planning agency, and there is not many planning agencies still around today. Most engineering firms have planners as part of their staff. Hila works for Bolton Link, and, um, Merritt works for TKDA, and there's a whole host of other engineering firms that have planners. But the second model that I looked at was, okay, so if we, if we interviewed, or if the council interviewed, um, for a consultant, and they, they, um, wanted to have that model, then, uh, would they be willing to come to the city and actually process the paper? Because that's really one of my problems, the, the area of, um, processing all the paper and doing all the paperwork has grown so much that I'm unable to keep up with it all. And so, when I talked to them, and they said, "Well, for a fee," and, and the fees were, were, uh, quite spendy, so it was anywhere from like $80 an hour up to $150 an hour, and yes, they'd be willing to spend eight hours a week here, but that's what the price tag would be in order to have the consultant here. So, so I thought about that, and I thought, well, that, that would be pretty, you know what I mean, expensive, um, to do. And then, there was another option where, um, perhaps we would be assigned two, two planners, you know, a junior planner and a senior planner, where one would, you know, work on reports, um, still report here, and then a senior planner would over, oversee it, but we would still have a consultant. And while that seemed okay, again, you had this, um, consultant coming in, and I felt like we would still probably have that, that back and forth, which I really want to get the planning portion, um, onto someone else's plate. So the last option, when I talked to, um, Hila, was, well, you know, I could, I could hire someone, um, and, in the best of worlds, I would hire someone, and they'd have all the experience, and they would be good to go and want a part-time job. And, and if that happens, it's great, if it, if it doesn't, then we would create an atmosphere where we have someone maybe just out of school, or who has a few years of experience, but then we would also hire, um, one of the firms to, to be more of a senior planner mentor for that person. So, they would process all the paper, and they would draft all the public hearing notices, and, um, you know, take a first stab at their, uh, the reports, and, um, do all, all the things that, um, I do with answering questions, and, and taking applicants through the process, and scanning all the paperwork, and getting reports out, and those sorts of things. And then, we would have the consultant really look at the planner report and the materials, and so that would be very small portion of the time that we would be paying $150 an hour versus $25 an hour. So, I quickly realized that for the same amount of money, I could have someone here for eight hours, I could have someone here for 24 hours, and do a whole host more of work. And so that's currently the ad that we have out. So it's posted, um, at the graduate schools, and at the Lincoln Minnesota Cities, and, let's see, on the website, and there might be a few other places we post, um, in order to see what, um, applicants we have. So, if it doesn't work, we'll try a different model that we're gonna try to, um, get up and running, but it is not my intent to have the same format as what, what we had with Dean, um, where, um, they simply, you know, write reports, and then in-house, we try to process all the paper. Meaning, on my desk.
Okay. I, uh, we don't really have, uh, on the planning commission report, the only thing I'd like to bring up is, uh, I don't know what I did with it, but.
Start at the end.
Huh?
Jody, on the planning.
He can, he can start.
Okay.
Oh, start on the end?
No, you can start.
Oh, okay, well, anyway, I, this, this education, you know, uh, there's two classes left, and I don't know if, uh, Chris or Barb, or where everybody sits on it, but there's one on the 28th, and there's one on May 16th that's put on that we could go to. And I was looking at going, and I thought I brought it with me, when you gave it to us, Elizabeth, but anyway.
What were the dates?
Huh?
May 28?
No, May 16th. I don't know about the 28th, if we could get in.
Oh, April 12.
But it was May 16th on, yeah. Too many papers. Do you have it?
I might.
But I do remember that the date was, uh, May 16th. Was anyways, I don't know if Chris, or anybody's wants, or it's down in Minneapolis, it's like a four-hour presentation, you guys probably already been to one.
Couple, I have a couple.
So I don't know if you're interested, Chris, or Barb? We can talk about it after the meeting, or whatever.
I have it at home, I think.
I've got it here somewhere.
Be approved by the council, correct?
The council already indicated that any of the planning commissioners that wanted to go to class, they were able to go to class. This class is put on the government training, um, government training service, and there's, um, chairman is, is speaking of is, there, there are in-person classes, um, and then there are virtual classes, and depending on which one you prefer, um, and I think there's only two classes that are in-person classes left.
Right, and it's like downtown Minneapolis, I believe.
I think so, yeah.
The daytime hours?
Yeah, like nine to something, nine to 11, or whatever.
But they have web, they have web.
They have web ones.
Yeah, do too.
Yeah.
So, anyway, there we are on that one. Anything else, anybody want to add?
Yeah, um, I attended the last city council meeting presented, um, and we did talk about the, um, two years on the IUP, for the first time, um, people coming in to apply, so that they kind of get a feel of what's going on, the community gets kind of a feel of what, what's gonna entail in their community, and give them a chance to, um, kind of watch, see how it fits in their lives. And I also did ask, how is enforcement gonna be directed in this, um, if, say, they have applied for it, and had it at one time, and now they're reapplying, and they're not going to get it? The council said they were gonna look into that further, how enforcement and different scenarios were gonna work in that. Um, and then I asked them if they had any direction for us, anything they wanted us to talk about or go into, and they said they didn't have anything at the time, so.
I think we all were at that meeting.
I'm sure.
Same crowd, just switched. But, uh, anybody else have anything to say?
I do. Like to welcome the new members, it's nice to be fully staffed again.
Thank you.
If any questions, like they, you know, call other members, and we have good city staff. And then also, um, a suggestion on the planning position, if everybody in this room puts that application on their social media too, it just, you know, just share it on Facebook, or whatever you do, you know, anybody, the more eyes, the better. And that's all I have.
Good idea.
Thanks.
Barb, or?
Nothing.
Chris?
No, I have nothing.
Like everybody else, I'm a little late, but welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And, uh, nice to have everybody up here, except I'm a minority, but, uh.
But you can handle it.
And Pam, you're gonna be at the council meeting?
Yep.
Next, and we'll probably all be there, but, uh, that's great. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn, or is there anything else to talk about?
Does anybody, everybody understand how the rotating, the rotating position works for the new, for new people? So, um, at the, you have a schedule in your packet of which meetings that you're assigned to present to the council, and if you can't make it for some reason, um, you have to, you have to negotiate with other members to take your place. In other words, you just can't be absent.
Somebody's gotta be here.
Yes, that makes sense.
Yeah. Sounds good. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Don't hear anybody oppose it. End of that.
Perfect, nice job.